Seven o'clock, please join us to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The heat on in here?
Next item, next item is the approval of the agenda.
We make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any adjustments, corrections?
Comments?
Comments?
I'm very disappointed that the powers that be ignored the wishes of the majority of the select board. We voted to have a minimal meeting tonight, and there's numerous things on this that don't need to be added to the agenda. And the second thing is, I don't see citizens' comments. If we're gonna do all this stuff, why isn't citizen's comments on this? It's just, just what I noticed.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Not that there's anybody here.
Well, it might, somebody might come in.
That's right.
Yeah, so why don't we amend it to add that in?
I'll amend my motion to include citizens' comments.
After the approval of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I second that?
Sure you can.
Is that good or not too?
Okay, all those in favor of the agenda with the corrections, aye?
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes from August 12th.
We'll make a motion that the minutes of August 12th be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, any corrections, additions, subtractions?
Yeah, I found one typo on page two, paragraph three. Ms. Russo noted that if, if the town of Pasadena is happy, and that is the town. That's all I found was that one typo.
Okay.
You with me, Elijah?
Yes.
Okay.
Bob, any correction?
On all of Tim Gilbert's comments, it should be R C S W D, not just R C S W.
Okay.
I don't know if it's appropriate to add to what was said, but Mr. Gilbert said it was determined that the R C S W has one of the lowest tipping fees in the state. Not sure what he was referring to, if he was referring to just the solid race districts, or if he was referring to transfer stations in general. I just, I don't remember what he said that night, but that's, that's an incorrect statement if it's overall.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Zach?
No.
No? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Citizens' comments. Seeing none, seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to police update.
The door is closed, it shouldn't be.
Could you leave that door open, please, Joe? How about turning the AC on?
Supposedly is on, you may want to adjust it, Joe.
I think I can handle that.
We just asked for citizens' comments, Joe, so if you have any, announce the time. Okay?
You're good, okay? Okay, police update while Joe is adjusting the air.
You've all got a copy of my report, right?
Yes.
A little more medical emergency than last week, I don't know why. Agency assist, mostly at Fairhaven. Get quite a bit of helping them out.
What category is that?
Agency assist.
Agency assist?
Agency assist, and some of those are medical, but I know a lot of them that have been assisting them with calls, not going like alone, just for help.
Oh yeah, okay.
So, if you're, is that due to the fact that Fairhaven?
Rumor I heard is they reduce their hours or their coverage.
They did reduce their hours, I don't know. I don't know what the details are. I mean, I mean, my, my policy, well, since I've been here, that if they, they did not have anybody on, they had an emergency, serious emergency, we respond, rather than that, if they ask for help, we respond, rather than that.
Okay. Does the, does the call system, do they contact you if they can't get ahold of somebody in Fairhaven? Is that how that works?
So, what normally happens, it goes to dispatch, and if it's a non-emergency call, they'll contact whoever, what probably Bill, Chief, and then he'll let their desk mate or say, no, we got nobody on until this certain hours, and then if there's an emergency, they'll put dispatch, and she'll ask us, and I told my officers, if it's an emergency or it's, you know, medical, something serious, you know? We just can't sit here like, when something happened over there and feel bad about it. Kind of puts us in a jam, but I don't know what else to do.
So dispatch gets ahold of you and not Bill?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
So, Fairhaven, correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief, but Fairhaven reduced the hours that they have police coverage on in their town?
From what I see, I don't know if it came from an order or something, I, all I can say is I can, I can see who's on when I'm working.
All I know is what I read in the paper a while ago, and I'm, you know, once again, that's, a lot of that is public opinion and not necessarily fact.
Do we get reimbursed for calls too?
I don't charge them for emergency calls or anything.
Where I'm going with this is if the police in Fairhaven have reduced their budget, or reduced their amount of spending on police coverage, and having us pick up slack, then I'm really not okay with that.
That's something I think as a ward, you guys would have to contact them and address issues, I mean, I had my policy. Do you want me not to go to the university or anything outside of the district?
Certainly not saying that right now, I think.
No, I, and I, I agree with you, I agree.
Is there any way we can quantify this in your opinion?
I mean, how many calls, I mean quantify as in how many calls we actually go there, or we?
Or what did, what if any changes did Fairhaven actually make, do you know?
The only thing I know is that a lot of times they don't have anybody on, like on Sunday, they'll have some missing shifts, or even half the day, like during the week, I felt, I've known this at the last two weeks. Like everybody is coming on to like midnight, or midnight, or like noon.
During the weekday?
Mm-hmm.
Even the police chief is not there around, wow.
I'm wondering if that's by order of town manager, select board, or?
I don't, but I think that subject of that is something that, that the chairman of the board would need to make contact with them if there's any issues like that, and don't expect us to take your calls type of stuff. Has to come from you guys. If you feel there's a problem.
Well, I'm trying to.
It just puts us, it puts us in a problem sometimes.
I'm totally, totally in favor of being good neighbors.
Yes.
But good neighbors also take care of themselves as well as helping each other out.
And it's gonna mean that somebody from Calson calls and has a problem, and you guys are in Fairhaven, that's not acceptable. I know it's not, it's out of your control, I know.
Okay?
Anything else on that?
We'll follow up on it.
Total calls, we're like, we'll weigh up on calls this year. Overall, we, you know, I think we got like twenty-three hundred change. Normally, we have like twenty-five hundred for the whole year, probably December. Arrests, uh, let's see, we got, we're down a little bit on arrests. Why, I don't know. And traffic violations, all the same, we're picking that up now, we just went through a campaign recently. Uh, actually, we're still in, so there's a highway safety, uh, D W I campaign going on until September 1st. So you're gonna see guys doing more enforcement on that side of it. No calls to the university, although it did, um, start today. The freshmen have been there all week, last week, we did have really major issues this weekend. Uh, the guys didn't, I didn't get a call after three o'clock, so that was a plus. Tow vehicle reports. You can see those. I have not had any issues from any of the tow operators complaining. So I think the system is working for now.
At least everything's well documented.
Yes. Well documented, so no longer can we have anyone claim rumors, they, they only have back to do with that. So a couple of things I want to go over, uh, one, obviously, the university started today, so the weekends will be a little busier. I put on some extra patrols in the weekends, because we're still down there. Two, well, I ended up hiring three people, two full-time, because we lost Scott Alkberg, who's going to Middle Beach, and of course, Damon, who never filled, he left in June. So we've been just kind of backfilling it with part-time, some overtime, and stuff like that since then. So I had a six-week hiring process, um, and I had a final panel, which consisted of one resident, university staff, which was the athletic director of Vienna, town manager, and then Mark Brown. And that was my final evaluation, I facilitated, and I chose two. Second person got hired by somebody else, and then went to number three, and I hired a part-timer, meaning part-time, my, my part-time ranks were getting depleted. So, that's nothing that's, uh, has to be done immediately. Two full-time hires, one will be hired until January, because Academy starts in February, so he's still working full-time elsewhere until that process happens. The other one is working twenty hours, because I originally had him sign up for a level-two certification. Uh, that class got pushed back, so I don't know, we're just doing admin and different things with them right now. They're not locals, although one came through the school district, uh, was a teacher. And the other one was, was, is working corrections. Any questions on that? So this time of year, Tuglurad jumping into the cruiser.
Wait, wait, hold, just a second, any, any questions, guys?
No, I don't.
Okay, Pete, go ahead.
Every two years, we, we, I slot to get a new cruiser, this is, this is our second year. So I have thirty-four thousand in my capital budget, seventeen thousand a year, each year, so, um, we want to get an interceptor. The bids, because we like the SUVs, because they hold more weight, and we have everything in there from lights, medical bag, AEDs, cones and such. So we, we always go through the state fleet bidding system, which they put out every year. So the cars went up this year, obviously, it's a two thousand and twenty, so the two thousand and twenty, actually, two thousand and twenty-one, Ford police SUV, which we have, what they call the interceptor utility, is thirty-three thousand. Two thousands and another twenty-four sixty-three on it, and which basically is, uh, the type of harnessing, and basically the police bag and stuff that you would have as options in there. So, and that's what we've been doing all along with all our receivers, saving the same options. So this, for the, so for the state contract price for the Ford, with those options, it's thirty-five four six three. So, normally, I would say, because the prices have gone up, I would, I could, I, we could buy it outright, and then, but we can't do it this year. We set for three years, twelve thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and ninety cents a year, or go forty, or ten thousand dollars, seventy-five cents a year. Those are the two least options. The other cruisers, just hold your question, I just want to go through the other state bids. So the other one was the SUV-type vehicles. Ford had a halftime pickup truck crew, um, that, that's without the options, it's thirty-one thirty-three one. Uh, the Chevy Tahoe, which I'd love to have, but that's a low first, that's thirty-seven eight three six, that's a two-by-four. Thirty-seven eight three-two, that's without any options. The Chevy Tahoe, four-by-four is over forty. And looking at the bids for cars, because I don't want a car, I, I personally don't pay cars, I'm just not big enough on all the equipment, I think because of what we got, the winters and the roads, it just makes more sense, the stand, the SUV. So those are the bids, um, the SUV-type vehicles. The Dodge is, um, Durango is not on the bid system, and because they are not pursuit rated yet. They're making these, these packages, heavy tow baggers, but they're not pursuit rated. Like every, every police we focus, pursuit rated out of Michigan, every year, they test them all, and that's how they get rated. Durango's not in that one yet. So, um, in reference to equipping, so the equipment grant is only gonna cover, which is a good thing, uh, our camera system inside, which is eighty-four percent, uh, they cover, our eighty-four percent reimbursement, just the camera system alone in these, in these cruisers is forty-nine twenty. So, if, out of our pocket, it would be seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. So then you talk about we're gonna take the radios out of the Taurus, because that's the vehicle that we replace, and we could sell the vehicle, put it out, I think we'll get at least a little money if we sold that one, because it's a two thousand and thirteen, it's got a hundred fifty-five thousand on it. Uh, one of the things we, this year, you know, that's why we try to get everybody through this. We would probably put in for four and a half thousand dollars that car this year, just, you're at that, you're at that, you know, I was talking to Jim today. You really want to get rid of vehicles between a hundred and a hundred twenty, that's usually the breaking point, and then all of a sudden, things just start going out, maybe just, they're always in the garage. So we're, we're gonna still keep the no, the low light bar up top, uh, because it's cheaper. A light bar on top is like, you know, three to four thousand, so we're just gonna keep all our lights inside, around the vehicles. So, with thirty-five four sixty-three, plus seven eighty-seven, you add another ten thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, and that would be fully a quarter. So we have thirty-four thousand, can't buy it outright, because I wouldn't have the what you had equipped it properly. So you guys can, you know, you don't have to necessarily make the decision tonight, I just, if you want copies of this, I can give them to you. Discussions?
Yeah, is this just from one dealer, the state bid?
No, that, well, the, the Fords go through, uh, the one out of Malpelear. There's one purchasing agent, he's actually a GM guy, Chevy guy, he's been doing it for years. So he goes out and gets these bids, and then they, they come up with the bids, and then they pick dealers where they're gonna come in, and that's them three. So like, the last three that I've gotten, the two that I've gotten, they drop it off up at, um, the Ford place up off Exa-Seven, that's Malpelear. Can't think of the name of it.
I guess the reason I ask that question is that I heard that, not just recently, but back a while ago, that some towns could do better working directly with the dealers, in other words, do better than the state bid.
Well, that's a good question, but here's a bid that we originally page, um, the original bid for that without, through the state, with the, uh, the base price would have been forty thousand six hundred fifteen dollars.
Without the extras?
No, that, that, that's just.
That's the total?
That would be, uh, a non-state fleet bid. If we went, if we didn't go to state fleet bid, that's what would cost us, if we went for a deal.
As opposed to forty-five?
No, that's, that, that excludes everything, that's the base, the base for this one.
Well, that's why I said.
Thirty-three change.
Thirty, are you saying thirty-five as opposed to forty?
No, that, actually, that price would go up, because that's without the options.
That's what, that's my question.
Yes, yes, add another two thousand.
Right.
So we're like forty-two. I mean, if you want, if you want me, if you want me and I'll test, uh, test Justin to do it, see if we can get a better price, we'll check.
No, there's nothing wrong with trying to get a better price.
No, 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 I mean, I don't think you are, but I, I'm saying.
That's okay, just to investigate it and see if we can do better, all right. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No, but do you have copies of those, Pete? I kinda lost you, we were going right along, and then all of a sudden, you threw in a ten thousand dollar, I didn't know what that ten thousand dollar was.
Yeah, I can, um, I'll get those to you guys.
We had options of two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight, then we had?
Well, that's the, those are, those are what we call the options that come to manufacturer.
Yeah, okay.
A key fob, let's say, it's four hundred and fifty bucks, but we don't get key fobs, it's four hundred and fifty bucks to actually get a key fob.
And you're talking about leasing?
Yes.
Do we know what the percent is for leasing?
Um, I don't have, no, I don't know the percentage.
One percent?
I don't know the percentage.
Okay.
I'll find out.
Okay, all right, okay. Shall I ask my question now?
Yes, ask the question, yes.
Peter, okay? I guess my, my question is, and I'll ask the same to, for any departments. My count is we have six cruisers and one motorcycle that we pay insurance on, that we don't own. Why do we need so many total vehicles?
Okay, so, those three vehicles, the actual ones you're talking about belong to the constables.
I know.
So, we don't maintain them?
Mm-hmm.
They're responsible for the gas, whatever.
Reimbursed for the gas.
Yeah, that's their, that's out of their budget, so, I mean, I look at that as a whole public safety fleet, but I look at what I deal with, is only four vehicles.
Four?
Four.
Count the Taurus, so this new one that replaced the Taurus, and you still be at four?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I guess what I'm saying too is we have, again, four plus two plus motorcycle insurance, and we also have state police over here, with what, two vehicles? Because each one of those guys usually have their own vehicle?
Yeah, sometimes, yeah, but that's not as regular as you think, they're not always over here.
They're not?
No. They're not always over here, they're not here every day.
I won't ask you where are they, but?
They're not here every day, I can tell you that.
All right, okay.
And that's up to, because what the lieutenant did this year, he ended up, uh, he's rotating guys, going out west side, now, now, they could be working under the bears, but
Right.
If they could call, they could, you know, his under signing comes out here.
Okay.
Before, they actually had designated personnel that this is worth their control over.
Okay, and I certainly in, in no way am suggesting that we don't have police vehicles on the road that are safe, high pursuit and so on, and do the things that they, that they have to do. But, I'll ask the same of any department. Why do you need it?
I don't need, I don't need seven vehicles.
You don't need seven?
I have four.
Four.
As, as.
I, I understand your answer.
I have four that I take care of and I maintain that I budget for.
Okay.
Those other, I don't.
You don't?
Now, you, I, I'll, I'll throw this out to you guys, you may have, you may have a constable asking for that Taurus.
For what?
Asking for that Taurus. I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just telling you right now.
Okay, I don't, I, not commenting on it at this time.
Well, my goal is always to get rid of them, I don't, I don't need one before, that's fine.
No. You don't need spares and all those things?
Not that kind of spare.
Okay.
What is that Taurus booked for, Peter, do you know?
No, I'll have to check on that.
Just rough.
I, I do mean, I, well, I, it's gonna be more than what the Impala was at the time. It's a two thousand and thirteen, I mean, it is under two hundred thousand, it, I mean, it's still a decent car.
Okay.
It just took a lot of money, you know, so, I mean, it's gonna be a decent car for somebody.
Okay, well, I guess, any other questions, guys?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones, of Explorer you're talking about, is a, either all-wheel driver or four-by-four?
It is all-wheel driver.
All right, and what does the camera coverage cover?
Maybe.
Well, is there, how many cameras are there, what do they?
Oh, so this is the in-car camera.
It's just the one that?
It stays in the cruiser, it's called a watch guard, it's just right up in here, there's a camera right here, records everything. We have old systems in our car. We never got those replaced because of grant, like, whatever, four or five thousand dollars.
Right.
This is the first year that I would, the, the grants have covered it for a while, so I'm taking advantage of it.
So it just records what goes on inside the vehicle?
No, both.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, oh, so it records, once you, you can activate it manually, if you don't want to put your lights on, if you put your lights on, everything goes on, it starts recording instantly.
It records like, forwards, backwards?
You could go to domestic, have your lights on, take the, the mic, put it on you, and it'll record your audio, it may not, because a camera may not be able, can't go inside a house, so, but we have body cams, so at that point, it would make a difference.
Doesn't make a huge difference from a liability point of view?
Well, camera systems, you have to, the, the way today's culture, you gotta have.
Okay, we had another one, Dick?
Just one more thing, the, uh, the last number, the ten, ten thousand dollars, what was in that?
What's that include?
Yeah, just real bridge.
Uh, the rear light bar inside, under mirror lights, it's basically all the lights, the pushbar, a cage. And we only got one car, this is the, you know, only second car we've got a cage, and you got a cage today. With the weapon mounts, which is for the rifle and shotgun, that's both magnetic, uh, which we have in all the cars. The console, that all the radios goes on, and everything like that. The computer base is basically for the NBC charging, that's in there on the row, siren, um, insulation. I'll get, I'll get you, I'll get your copies.
So all our vehicles, they don't have the cage in between the front seat?
One, no.
Really?
Yeah, because it's, it's expensive. Like the prisoner, the cage with weapon mounts is twenty-three thirty-five, but it's a good cage.
Guess what I was getting at, is if you arrest somebody and you don't have the vehicle with a cage?
Front seat.
Do you?
And you, and you tie a strap, you hang it out the door, or you shackle it. But it's dangerous, I mean, you know, you get somebody that's combative.
Oh, yeah.
You can't, you have to have somebody in the backseat, you gotta be covered over, it's, it's, it's not good.
Okay, anything else, Bob?
No, that's.
Zach?
No.
Tell us that, okay, we'll, um, move on to crack ceiling bid award. Mike, quickly?
Crack ceiling, we received three bids, um, and reviewing them and talking with Paul, I'm recommending that Nikon Coating Corporation be awarded the bid for crack ceiling this year in the amount of four thousand, not to exceed four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. They were not, they were, they were fifty dollars over the lowest bid, but the lowest bid came in from Fresh Coat Asphalt, which we are still fighting with from last year's episode with crack ceiling and line painting, and I do not recommend them at this time.
Okay.
We anticipate doing this.
Exactly.
Before thirty September is what we put in for a bid.
Because last year, didn't we have possibly a problem due to weather? Was that part of it?
Really, the weather wasn't, I, I talked to folks, it really wasn't the weather, it was the fact they didn't follow procedures correctly, um, and making sure that the cracks were blown out with, of water, um, and, uh, you know, I mean, obviously, the temperature has something to do with it if it's, um, if they don't put it out quickly.
Yeah.
But as long as it's up to temperature, and they're putting it right down, uh, it shouldn't have been an issue, but, um, they weren't blown out properly is what I'm, what I've investigated and found, so the stuff was coming up immediately.
When, do you recall when they did it last year?
It was in October.
November, wasn't it?
October, November?
Yeah, it was October.
It was cold, though.
It was.
Too cold, okay.
And why do we, why, why do we wait?
Mm-hmm.
Did that one, why do we?
Well, I don't, I don't have a good answer for you, Bob, the fact that, it just, it got by us, I talked to Paul today about this year, it's kinda late this year, so we, we talked about it today and said, after the budget's approved for this next year, we're gonna immediately put the bids out, so we can start soliciting them early in, you know, by January, February timeframe.
Hmm?
Or, I mean, Mar, March, April timeframe.
Okay, okay.
So they can do it over the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
All right, any other questions? Not, their motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, or we award the two thousand and nineteen crack ceiling to Nikon Coating Corporation, not to exceed four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, roadway line striping.
Uh, again, for line striping, we received three bids, one was from Fresh Coat, one was from a company out of Rockland, Massachusetts, and the other one's from out of Barry. Um, I do not recommend, uh, Fresh Coat, uh, the, the paint they put down last year hasn't even lasted to this year. Um, again, don't know, don't know the components of the paint, but, uh, it should last a full, at least a full year, um, supposed to last two. Um, and the second bid is, uh, it's eight cents per linear foot, uh, from Highway Safety Systems out of Rockland, Mass, uh, Massachusetts. I have no idea anything about this company, I looked them up online, um, they got some good ratings online, but I don't really have any other people I can call locally to see if how the, it holds up, how their work holds up. Um, but then, L and D Safety Marking Corporation out of Barry is the highest out of all, met twelve cents per linear foot. Um, that's, that's the high end of our budget, we, we budgeted ten to twelve cents per linear foot. Um, it, it'll get us the amount that we want, um, and I don't have it on this bid sheet, but, um, I, I just, the unknown bothers me with the, the company out of Massachusetts. Um, so my recommendation would be go with L and D, uh, for the twelve cents a linear foot, it stays within our budget for the amount of, uh, linear feet that we're gonna, um, stripe, which includes Sand Hill Road from Route four A over to Sand, over to, uh- Road from Route 4A over to Sand, over to South Street, that whole thing's getting paved, the, the new pavement up on Drake Road, and any line striping for Depot Terrace if we have to put anything on there. We really can't put center lines on there, it's really about if we put fog lines down, but the, the money here was for Drake Road and Sand Hill.
Is there any deadline on that?
30 September.
Huh?
30 September.
30 September, okay.
So the bid, so you'd be making a bid for, for hiring them for 12 cents per linear foot.
Did you say you, you don't know how many linear feet we have?
We did, I don't remember, we gave, what we gave them was the, the roads, and then they bid on the road. That's why I'm saying, the people from Massachusetts had to have done it by GPS coordinates, you know, or something, so, nobody came, nobody came here to the town asking for any further instructions or details. We had a non-mandatory bid meeting and no one came to it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we award LND Safety Marking Corporation for 12 cents per linear feet for the roadway line striping.
Is there a second? Motion to second, any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Jo, are you here for a specific purpose?
Yep.
I'm sorry you're not on the agenda or anything.
She's on my manager's stuff, I, I forgot.
Oh, she's on your manager's stuff. Okay, we'll move on then. Sorry, Mary Jo, I was gonna let you off early, saying, what is she doing here? Okay, concrete floor repair, highway garage, bid award. Mike?
Well, this one's, this one's ugly. We sent it out to 10, nine, there's supposed to be a 10th one. Nine on this sheet, businesses that deal with concrete, and we had a bid meeting at the garage with Paul, myself, and we had a copy of SW Cole's report from the floor at the highway garage, and the only person that showed up was Jared Ellis from Ellis Concrete for this bid, and, which is attached. I don't, depending on what the board wants to do, I don't really wanna read it out loud, and, cause if you want me to rebid this, which I'm not recommending...
Don't read it out.
I don't wanna jeopardize his number. So, but only having one bid and not having anything to compare it against, that's what, that's what the bid is, so, I guess I'm looking for a little more guidance from you on it.
What's the max on the, what's the max in the budget for that work?
Forty-two thousand, I believe, forty-two or forty-three thousand.
Okay.
But, if we don't, what I'm concerned about is if we go another winter and we don't repair this and we get a crack in that floor, it's going to exceed that amount to fix it.
If this company gets the bid, when could they do it?
Immediately.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Motion? No motion? No, we got a motion.
I'll make a motion, we award the bid for the town garage, concrete floor to Jared Ellis. Ellis Construction is grateful, and I, I have to give the...
Now you gotta read, you gotta use the number now.
Let me throw a caveat to you. If we do the construction ourselves, to dig up around it and expose the thing...
Oh, that's right.
We save $3,000.
So then, why don't we do that?
So, yeah, why don't we do that?
So then...
Well, it dropped it down, but I, I would say you make the bid not to exceed that amount that's on that bid, or on as a quote, and that way...
You got that caveat too. If the existing footer is sound.
We don't know that, that's, so if the existing footer is sound, that's $2,000 savings. But until we excavate it, we've only looked at one.
Right.
So I would ask that the board award at what it is, and if we save, if we excavate it, which we can do, that's 3,000, plus if the footers are good, that's another 2,000. That wouldn't be built, we wouldn't be able for.
I'm just gonna redo it, so I'm gonna do it...
Not to exceed, Zach?
Not to exceed. Okay.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, we're discussing.
Okay, discussion.
I have one question. This would do with the engineer, the day I was up there, the engineer was there, this would do what they described where they cut the floor back, they dig out the concrete block wall, and replace everything, including the footings if they need to?
Correct.
And all the piers under the building are still substantially sound, we think?
We only looked at the one, so, we are assuming, we're making an assumption based on what we saw, without digging in front of every garage door at that point.
So Mr. Ellis's bid is just making that same assumption?
Correct.
The odds of fixing, this fixing the problem are fairly good, right?
That's what the engineers are saying is the best way, best practice to do it.
Is there a warranty on this?
Yes. It's a one, one year.
Are those engineers gonna come back and check on progress of the work, or?
Not unless we hire them to do that.
Oh, okay.
We had, well, we had, first we had one engineer, a geotechnical engineer come in, give us the initial opinion. He recommended that SW Cole came in, come in, which they did, and that's where we got the write-up from SW Cole for the contractors to look at.
That's when they were up there doing the digging, right?
Correct.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Signing of fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget surplus.
Gentlemen, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this a little bit less cumbersome if you, first of all, yeah, okay, I'll have to go, you hand those over. I, I did a one-page thing that takes everything from this manager report and puts it onto a, a single page, which, so the, this, the stuff in the manager report is for reference, and that's, if you choose to make a motion, that's, would be the language for motion.
What was he gonna sign?
Save that for...
Operating budget. So right now, and Melanie's in the room, so just, back me up, just so you guys know...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me have one, I thought I read it over.
Put it in the box, I'll do it.
So, right now, the audits, we're pretty much through the audit, there's some stuff that still has to be done, but our initial estimates for the surplus for next, or from this past year is, and I'm gonna go conservative and say $180,000. Melanie may tell you it's a little higher than that, but that's, that's, I'm using the conservative side. So, that's what, that's where I approached this from, and I looked at, with Melanie, I went through every department's budget to look at what they had for a surplus and what I stopped them from doing. And I can go through those individually as we go through this. There, there was some, there was some semantics in there that, like the, the transfer station, they had, they were, they were over budget, but $23,000 of that came from the highways department's work they did up at the transfer station to fix the retaining wall. So it really wasn't transfer station like their normal operations, it was repair and maintenance of something, but the labor for the highway department was charged off against the transfer station's budget. So, their numbers, looking at the transfer station numbers, it wasn't as bad as what paper said. But, you wanna weigh in on the, on the mount, just to...
Well, can I just interject something here? I don't believe we have, as yet, a copy of the end-of-the-year budget. And before I'm ready to act on this, and I'm not saying I, I wouldn't support it or not, I'd really like to see a copy of our end-of-the-year budget so we can look at the whole thing and see how it's projected from what we have here. And perhaps by next meeting, you think we, it's possible, Melanie, we might have that?
Well, you certainly can, Jim.
Thank you, okay.
By the next meeting, I will probably officially close the books if possible, because I have to get the audit documents to Nathan by the 10th, and your next meeting is until 9:00.
Yep, okay. Okay, so, I would, I would suggest you just hold off on this till we get that, and each of us has the opportunity to, to read the entire report, and then we'll take action on it.
Alright.
What's...
I, I just think that's only gonna give you a day, right, to turn it around? So I guess, if we have the, if they make a motion on Monday, the 9th of September, and we looked at these numbers right now as, plug them all around, you know, plug them against it, and if they change something, then it's, it's...
Well, I'd hope we'd have it before the 9th.
No, I mean, so you can make a motion on the 9th.
No, yeah. Second, 9th, okay, yeah, that'd be fine, as long as we have it a few days in advance so we have an opportunity to, to read it and maybe ask you questions, or ask Melanie questions and so forth.
It would be in your box listed in the morning, it would be in your box by tomorrow, Wednesday of the week.
Okay, that'd be fine, okay. So is that agreeable to the other board members?
It's Wednesday of this week?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would like to offer that, I, and I can send this to you, print them out, I took a look at a budget. I took a, this year's budget and I plunked it in there for next year. I haven't run this past Melanie yet, but it's just crossing columns, and I looked at hypotheticals, like pay raises for any non-union or union employees based on what's already been discussed, if it has, and if it hasn't been discussed, I say it out loud as I, I used the, the same numbers we used last year.
Okay.
And I looked at it and said, and I, I owed you this to you, Jim, I told you I would do it a while back. So, taking out those one-time things, like $40,000 at the transfer station to fix this or that, putting that in there, it looks like next year's budget would be, and this is a guess, by, you know, I don't know the insurance stuff yet, $61,912 is what the budget would go up, after you take all those things I asked for you guys last year, which you graciously approved, for repairs and maintenance. So, that's, I'm just letting you guys know, I didn't just go out back and sit at the picnic table and, and dream this up. I actually looked at budget numbers from surplus to needs to what was projected for next year, cause I certainly wanna put the town in any kind of financial liability, so...
Okay, so, what else do you have, Mike?
Well, in the, inside the manager report, one thing I did leave off was Mary Jo, we talked today, she had some numbers for me today on a new mapping program, so, I think at this point, I'll let her, I'll let you explain it, we won't talk numbers, because I still have to throw it into the meeting for the 9th. So, if you wanna talk numbers, I just don't wanna ask for an occurrence, but...
Okay, Mary Jo, you're up.
Okay, so, in working with the mapper that Castleton uses currently, and working with a mapper that does the other town, Polley, that I work for, and some complaints I've heard about various issues reading the maps, and I think updating the maps has been a little bit not consistent here for whatever reason. So, I asked the mapper that we use in Polley to give me an estimate or a bid as to what it would cost to have him redo Castleton maps and, and pick that up. And so that's what I gave to Mike today, was his response to me, and I don't know if you guys wanna look at the maps and see the differences in them, or whether you care or not, but Polley maps have property IDs, they have names, they have acreage. If it's a multiple parcel that's been combined for tax purposes or whatever, it kinda delineates them as separate parcels get together. They're color-coded maps. We also get data list for, that references the maps, so town clerk would have one, they go alphabetical, they also go by property ID, and they give open page names, a bunch of various acreage, all that in them. So I'm just, I'm making the proposal, and if there would be any interest, we also get the data on digitally, so we can open it up, load it up, make copies of whatever various parcels. He does all the work. I did find this year that I had to do an awful lot of research for the mapper that, that's being used now. It does take a lot of time out of, out of what I'm supposed to be doing to be pulling all this information, so, this mapper does the work to, to bring that, you know, bring the map to fruition. And I, I've had pretty good luck with them. If there's discrepancies, there's also a section in here that gives me the discrepancies, which is really easy to read, and I can go back and make those corrections so that they're constantly being updated.
Do we have a, a proposal from the current mapper here?
Um, well, his, so, his, his yearly maintenance, it's the yearly maintenance fee, we do have that.
Okay.
I don't know, do you want those for...
Would this be, would this be yearly maintenance fee also?
So this would be a one-time to, to do the switch, and then there'd be a yearly maintenance fee.
Would it be covered in your budget?
Um, I think the one-time expense, I would like the board to consider using reappraisal funds. There's a, a fund of money that the town gets each year per parcel, and so that accumulates. So I would propose that, that, that one-time money be used out of that, and then I would budget, you know, put in my budget the yearly maintenance fee.
You wanna, could you do something for us for next meeting?
Sure.
This was supposed to be a very short meeting, and...
I know.
There's already been some comments on it.
They're always supposed to be short meetings.
So, could you do something for us for the next, get it to Mike and what the proposals are and so on?
Yeah, so while Mike's got a copy of the proposal, and I just gave it to him this afternoon, so it was sort of off the hip, but we're able to give it to Mike.
Okay, alright.
But meanwhile, I can, I can leave a copy of, you know, you can look at the maps here, and I'll leave a copy in my office of these maps, and you can just kind of do that.
Does the board want three proposals? I don't think it's necessary, I trust Mary Jo's experience.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure.
No, I think I agree with Bob.
Okay.
If she's got what we have now and what she'd like to see, if we can compare apples and apples, that would really be...
Yeah.
I would like to stop in the office sometime when you're here. You can show me what, what is now and what we'd like it to be, and...
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, Mary Jo, thank you for coming over.
Thank you, no problem.
You had to leave, you had to leave Lake St. Catherine to come over here, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. See you later, thanks.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Manager report, the, the first one for action is number two, Ed Bolch. I, I talked to Ed Bolch after the last meeting, he was still adamant that he didn't wanna give up his customer list. I, I told him I, I don't believe the board was trying to go after him to collect a permit fee for these people that are on his list that are Castle and Residence, or Hubbard and Residence, so, I just, I guess I'm stuck because he wanted to come and talk to the board, but he didn't come last meeting, and he says that, that ordinance is outdated and the language about turning in the, the list should be struck, taken out of there, and he keeps referencing you, Bob, that you would understand what he's talking about.
Yeah, but...
I do, I do, but I don't understand why he won't give his list, when we've reassured him, we're not gonna charge him per customer.
Well, an ordinance is...
Do you guys, do you guys still want me to give him a ring, cause you kinda held me off a lot of times?
Look, an ordinance is valid until it is either amended or repealed, so the ordinance is still in effect.
I, I...
Now, if he wants, if he wants, is recommending to the board that we look at the ordinance, review the ordinance, and make appropriate changes if they're necessary, that's different, but that goes forward. It doesn't go backwards.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, you, you want me to revoke his privileges at the transfer station?
I just think it's a bad idea.
We really don't want that to happen, but we have to have cooperation.
Can I interject here, Jim?
Sure you can.
I thought in the last meeting we all agreed that the ordinance needed to be changed and that we weren't at this point going to enforce that part of the ordinance.
We did talk about that.
Didn't we agree to that last meeting?
Not that I, I, that, I don't think I would have agreed to that.
I don't know what we agreed to, we said we'd look at the ordinance.
Yeah, that we would look at, we would look at the ordinance. But to say we're not going to enforce it.
Well, I thought we told the town manager that we were not going to require him to require Mr. Bolch to provide us with his list. I thought we said that, maybe I'm.
I'm pretty sure that's what he said, we have to go back and look Jim, but I'm pretty sure that's what he said.
That in the minutes, Eliza?
Was it the last meeting or two weeks ago?
May have been something in the executive.
We've got to figure out what percentage of Hubbard and people are using that and that list is imperative that we get it from him.
Then we can argue that point, we can argue that point, discuss that point, but an ordinance, a law is in effect and you just don't say, we're not going to, we're not going to enforce or administer a particular law because somebody doesn't like it, then change the law. And once you change the law, it's changed and it's appropriate. But until you do that, and I don't want to pick on anyone, but to simply say, I'm not going to do it because I don't like it, well, we'd be glad to look at it, we'd be glad to look at it in a fair and objective way.
All right, what I, where I'm coming from on this one, I guess, is it hasn't been enforced in like twenty years. So, all of a sudden we're coming out of the woodwork to do it and he want, he has an argument and I, I was hoping he would come here to to explain his argument so you would have something to decide on whether you wanted to change the ordinance or not.
Did he have a meeting with you after our meeting?
Yes, well, I talked to him, I didn't have a meeting with him, I saw him up at the transfer station and we discussed it.
Did you tell him the board's position?
I did.
And he said?
I'm not inclined to give my list up.
Kind of puts us in a difficult position, I mean, and we don't want to be in that position, but sometimes you're forced into it. It's kind of like a former governor said to the state police, look the other way.
I guess that's not good guidance for me, so I.
No, it is, it is, because that's what we're, we're talking about here, not enforcing something and at the same time, even though we've, we agree, we will look at it, it's, it's still an ordinance. And then somebody else says, well, there's something else I don't like, so why are you enforcing that? Why would you enforce a zoning ordinance? I don't like part of it. Well, if you don't like part of it, we won't do it, not so.
I'm just looking for your, if you, because I think last meeting it was something else was said, so that's what I'm looking for is the guidance. I'll go and say we need it and, or you're going to be revoked.
I would say to him, suggest that we say to him very politely, look, we have the ordinance, please give us your list, we're more than willing to look at it. Make changes if changes should be made, we'll listen to what you have to say and if there are appropriate changes, we'll be, we will certainly consider it and if it's appropriate, we'll make them.
I've said half of that so far, so.
Can you reassure him not, this whole board is not in agreement of revoking his privileges to transfer station?
No, we don't want to do that.
No, I don't know if anybody on the board does.
No, no.
Just stress that to him. But we have to enforce our ordinance as we do.
That's, you're saying two different things right now.
Well, no, I'm not.
You said we're not going to revoke him, but right now you're telling me that ordinance is an ordinance is an ordinance and we'll revoke, or we're going to adhere to it. So, do you want me to go back to him right now and say, until you provide the list, you're going to be revoked? At that time.
I think you can phrase it in another manner which isn't quite as, with a, quite as big a hammer as that one is. Tell him the situation, explain to him the situation, we're in. Ask him to please do that because we have an ordinance, just like any other ordinance, and we have to enforce it until it's changed. And would you please, would you please cooperate with us, in the meantime, we will look at, be happy to look at the ordinance and very happy to hear what he has to say.
I told him that already and he, he didn't, he wasn't, he wasn't being confrontational. He just was adamant that he didn't want to give up his list and.
What's, I don't want to get into that.
Why don't we set?
He had a date that he has.
A portion of the next meeting aside to look at the ordinance.
Fine.
That, that way.
Fine.
We don't have to worry about this, two, three, four, five, six meetings from now.
And let's have your input and his input prior to the meeting so we can digest what both of you have to say.
Why don't you invite him to the meeting?
Of course, I have invited him, but the next one I'll let him here again.
When we look at the ordinance, invite him to that meeting.
Maybe stress to him that it's pretty important he shows up at the meeting.
Yes.
Give us that much, right?
Sure.
God.
That give you enough guidance, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll tell you that, just so you are aware, I was very pleasant with, with him, I, I know him, I wasn't rude to him, I just, I tried to explain to him why and he was adamant, what do you want to do, so I will go back and talk to him again.
Okay, anything else?
Well, there's stuff on here, the MHD Solar, I gave you a copy of it, a lease agreement to look at, so by next meeting. I, Lois Baldwin has it, she responded to me today saying that she hasn't looked at it yet, but to give her a call tomorrow after, tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday. But this is the MHD Solar, they, they really still, they want to still put the solar array in behind the transfer station. We've done the homework up there to determine how much, an estimate of how much good gravel is still in the ground and to get that out, so they're, they're basically saying, hey, we'd like to enter into agreement with you now, give you till June of next year to remove the gravel and that, that way they can start working on their permits, et cetera, et cetera. And it gives us time to excavate, stockpile and backfill the area that we take gravel from. And part, one of the things we were looking at was all this stuff we're taking from ditches and the work at the transfer station when we excavate to use the the garbage from there to put in the hole behind the pit. So, I just gave it to you to look at and I'll come back to you for next meeting to, and I'll have something from Lois in between to give you on what, what she says about, if there's any liabilities that she's worried about.
And at that time, we should be prepared either to accept it or reject it?
Correct.
Okay.
The next one's in the sidewalk project, so I've been back and forth again with the state on this and basically the area in front of Tom's Bait and Tackle, they're saying has to be redone because the water didn't make it all the way to the drop inlet and to the, almost at the front of his driveway, a little bit to the, to the west. But the work to get completed is eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. We are maxed out, anything that we pay right now would come out of our own coffers.
So, do you need a motion on this?
So, whether to decide do you want to approve the money as, as I put in there, or if you want something else done, but I'm, I'm recommending that the board approve the eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars to complete that.
Where will it come from?
You don't think we can negotiate with?
It comes out of our sidewalk budget.
Yeah, are we covered or we're not covered?
Yeah, we're covered.
Okay, alright, is there a motion regarding the payment to Beldon? Paul had a chance to read it, you've heard from Mike.
To do this extra work, is that what you're talking about, Jim? To do this?
Yep.
To redo it, someone will bring.
Redo it, Tom's Bait shop.
The reason is, is the VHB, and I'll give you, I'll try to be brief, VHB is our, was our engineer, our resident engineer. They looked at the plans and they reviewed whether or not this was a valid plan or not. The problem is, they're saying it was, the state come back and said, you didn't do it to the proper specs. And the curb reveal at Tom's Bait and Tackle is not correct to get the water to flow properly towards the drop inlet and that's, that's what the project's going to entail is is taking some of that pavement down, or, yeah, pavement down to reduce, to grate the, the reveal of the curb and get the water toward the drop inlet.
So, where's the problem, why, the engineer or Beldon's? Did the engineer not?
Twofold, twofold. VHB didn't do something. They didn't give Beldon's the, the correct drawings. But Beldon's, even though the drawings were wrong, they still didn't, it just still didn't get the water to the, you know, the first the first plan, was still, the water still should have got to the drop inlet, it didn't. So, there's a problem there and there's a problem with the reveal on the curb not being to what the second drawing was from Lamroon Dickinson.
And you're recommending that we pay for their mistakes?
And I put it in there, to get this job completed, if we, if the town wants to go and try to find fault in VHB or somebody else, then I think that's something that we do, but we got to, Beldon's got to get the damn project done before winter.
Why does it have to be done before winter?
It's going to pool up all that water in front of his property. He's not happy about it as it is, so if we leave it with water in front of it, he's going to be even less happy.
It's going to turn into ice, right?
Yeah, it freezes, salt melts and then it goes, it pulls up and freezes.
Now, what if, what if we paid for it out of our pocket and went after Beldon and VHB for reimbursement?
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
We pay it, we determine where the fault lies, the true fault lies and then we, we would.
But what?
Because Beldon is saying that they did it by the plans. But the problem is, the water didn't make it there, so it wasn't done correctly.
Well, and if you, if you tear it all up and redo it, then you've got no proof that they didn't.
Well, we got plenty, we got plenty of proof, we got photos and we've got the, the, the report. Peter Pochop and Teresa Gilman came in from the state, they're the ones that inspected it and said, nope, not good enough.
Don't this VHB, don't they have insurance to cover this kind of stuff?
I imagine that they would.
Then let them step up to the plate.
Yeah, Beldon's would too.
One at a time, guys.
Sorry.
I'm just, it's just irritating, every meeting we come into, the taxpayers have to pay for this one screw up or that one screw up and I, I'm tired of it. Make them responsible now, because we, we've learned our lesson, Mike, with trying to go after these guys after the fact.
Yeah, I don't think.
Then we're bargaining with them.
That's fine, that's what the board wants to do and that's what.
Well, I don't know what the rest of the board wants to do, but that's the way I feel about it.
Make a motion. Make a motion.
Make a, have you had?
One of you guys make a motion.
I make a motion, we don't pay the eleven thousand, we make VHB be responsible. Make them correct.
Make who responsible, Bob?
It's VHB, that's the engineers.
Engineering outfit? Okay.
Make them correct their mistakes.
Alright, the second, motion is second, any further discussion?
Citizen. Could I make a comment?
Yes, citizen.
I think we're all forgetting that there was a catch basin in the original design to the east side of Tom's Bait. And the engineers made a huge mistake where the placement of that catch basin could not go on top of the sewer or the water.
Right.
So, they eliminated it. The engineers did that, don't blame Beldon's, it was the engineers that decided, well, we can't put it there. It's on top of the water and sewer. So, they're the ones that should be responsible and I'm glad that you finally spoke up, Bob Spalding, and said, it's time to test the waters, they have insurance, errors and omissions, they should pay for the mistake. That's not the first time, not that company, but I can tell you a few that A and E is made.
Okay.
So, I just want to make that comment about the catch basin. So, let's find out whose idea was it, first of all, to design it where they did and then to eliminate it. Now, the state's telling us we can't change the plans, but the engineer did.
That was Lamroon Dickinson, right?
Yes, and the engineer, at the time, they said they could make it work so that they, they didn't need that easterly catch basin. So, that's, that was a decision made, whenever, Beldon was on the ground, VHB was on the ground, even Pat Travers was in, our MPM was involved. And they decided that they didn't, they could make it work without it is what it really came down to.
They were Lamroon Dickinson or VHB or both?
VHB talking with Beldon's over what the engineer was saying. Engineer said this, they said, oh yeah, we can make it work.
Okay, we beat it around and up, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
She carries.
Can you read back the motion, just so we're clear on what it says?
I said, Bob Spalding made a motion to not pay and to make VHB pay. And I'll put in for the replacement of the pavement in front of Tom's Bait shop.
You better have the dollar figure in there too.
The eleven thousand.
Nine fifty-three.
Yep, I have it written down up here. But that would cover the expense since the water did not reach the drop inlet.
Okay, anything else, Mike, that you have for action?
Yeah, audit, the financial audit, so, talking with Melanie and our, the accountant, we have exceeded the threshold for federal dollars spent on projects, so that included sewer project, sidewalk, road grants, the grant for the fire department, it requires a single audit. And that audit comes with a cost. And Melanie, I'll let you answer some questions if they have.
Basically, we have our annual, our audit every year where the books are reviewed and our financial reporting, et cetera. There is a federal requirement that if you expend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more of federally received money in a year, then you will also need to have what's called a single audit. And all that is audited are those federal grant dollars, loan dollars. Because of the aligning of the stars, we had several projects in a single fiscal year that made us exceed that, the Route thirty south sewer project, the sidewalk project. And early last year, the fire department received thirty-four thousand dollars or so of federal money through FEMA Homeland Security, something, something for extrication tools. So, add, add up all those dollars expended, spent them, not just grant money received, but it's when you, when you spend it, it's like eight hundred and five thousand dollars or something. So, we've exceeded that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. When that happens, the audit requirements are fussier, what the auditor CPA firm would have to look at in terms of strictly those grants and how the funds were expended and then there's forms that are completed. And so, with that comes an additional cost on top of our audit costs.
Any idea what it will be?
I believe the base amount is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars and which would cover the grant recording and I believe a grant. Then it would be an additional twenty-five hundred dollars for each grant that needs to be audited. And I believe we have a total of four.
Four times twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, plus the base amount.
Plus the seventeen fifty.
I think.
What will that do to our budget?
We did not budget for it.
Where will the money come from?
I put it in the part of this stuff for the carryover.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you, Melanie. Anything else, is that it, Mike?
That's it, that's all I had.
That's it? Okay. Select board comments? I'll go this side.
I'm on side.
Zach, you're okay, Dick?
Yeah, there was one thing, where was it? Mike, you had put in our mailbox an email and a drawing of the firehouse plot and the, one of the engineers from the federal government was concerned that we had excavated an area in a wetland?
Not that we were, we were mowing it and maintaining it.
Oh, okay, because I thought I read it that it was excavated, I remember we brush hogged it when we started construction, but we never dug there.
No, they were, she said, this, this lady called me out of Army, US Army Corps of Engineers and basically they looked at a satellite image of that area behind the fire station more to the north, northwest and there, she called me and said, by the Act two fifty permit, it's supposed to remain natural and it looks like you're mowing it and I'm standing out looking out my window going, oh, yep, you're right. And she goes, you got to stop mowing it and she talked to me on the phone, she sent me a map, a little drawing of the area in question, it's a small area. So, it's, we got to stop mowing.
There's no penalties or anything in that, you just have to stop mowing?
Not at this point.
That same email, didn't it mention that the fire station is occupying wetlands, did I not read that in that same email?
I don't remember that part.
We paid, we, we, there was seventeen hundred and fifty square feet of wetland that we paid five thousand dollars, the ducts unlimited to mitigate. So, that's not an issue.
But yet she brought it up in that email.
It's still not an issue, we paid the fee.
Okay, maybe we need to let her know that's not an issue, that we paid the fee. Because the way I read it, it sounds like we'll trade you for what you've already taken for wetlands versus what?
I'll look at it again, I just.
That's, that's the way I read it.
Because we paid the fee for the ducts and that was all done and that was a really dry wet spot if I recall.
Okay, anything else?
No, I just put a bunch of stuff in your boxes FYI, so you guys don't get blindsided about things that are happening, but I didn't put it on record.
Good enough, Bob?
Just, why do we need another full-timer up for the transfer station, Mike? I understand two part-timers are gone, but do we need somebody there on the off days?
I don't, I don't have, I only have one person up there right now.
That one person is full-time, huh?
Yeah, Chris.
Yeah.
So, the, the second person, I don't have anybody up there at this point, so Chris is going to be by himself.
Well, I don't want him by himself, but I, would it just be parent, just to have him there on the open days like Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, instead of having him there on Wednesday, Friday too?
Look at it, yeah.
I just, I don't know if we've ever had two full-timers up there. I just, I don't know if we've ever had two full-timers up there.
The, the only thing I don't want to do is I don't want to go backwards. We've made a lot of progress up there and even Mary Beth Hattika came in tonight and said, "It's the best it's ever looked." And the only reason it is that way is because we had enough time and people to do the stuff on the off days.
I think we have had two full-timers up there.
Okay. Any, any other select board concerns?
I know.
Dick? Bob, you're all set? I guess we're all set. Move on to the warrants.
Make a motion. We approve warrant number 0826R for $650. Warrant 0826 for $50,41.78. Warrant 0822 for $5,681.74. Warrant 0820 for $5,619.51. Warrant 0813 for $18,530.56. Warrant 0822P for $16,355.85. And warrant 0815P for $16,209.35.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion. We approve warrant number 0821P for $682.97. And warrant number 0814P for $682.97.
Second. Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Dick?
I refuse myself.
Dick refuses himself. Whoops, I almost turned that over. Did I turn this one over on you too? No, that's your other stuff.
Other stuff.
Okay.
No longer relevant at this point.
That's what I'm trying to separate here too, Nick.
I don't want to do that.
Now, while they're finishing that up, Mike, you have something else on there, warrant for approval. What's that?
Where are you looking, Joe?
Purchase order for.
Purchase order for approval, I'm sorry. Purchase order for approval? What's that?
I don't have it. If you have it, we, standard, just standard on there. If there's none, then there's none.
There's none, okay.
All right. Think so. It's all I was handing to me.
Got nine. Okay, anything for recap items, follow-up? Seeing, not hearing, none? Motion for executive session? Now, you have personnel on there?
Yeah, just as of late today, I just got information that you're going to want to hear.
So do we want to do labor relations?
Now, let's do labor relations first.
So do you need that motion to approve, Bob?
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for labor relations with the Ford, the town manager, and Joe Bruno.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.